At this time, I'd like to call the Amos Grove Area School District Board of Education August meeting for order. If you could rise to say the flag.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the British and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Vail have the meeting properly announced?
Yes.
Here's our motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
The first being by Joanne, second by Ron to adopt the agenda. Discussion. So now we'll start this vote with Jeff.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Kent.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
And my vote is yes to pass a eight zero. Brenda is excused. With that, no one signed for public comments, so we'll move on. Well, consideration adjournment to close session under section nineteen point eight five one C. Is there a motion for that? Consideration adjournment to close session under section nineteen point eight five one C. Consideration adjournment to close session under section nineteen point eight five one C. There's no motion, we'll move on. Motion for consent agenda.
So, how's that?
Jim.
And Jeff.
Under consent agenda tonight, motion made by Jim, seconded by Jeff to move for the consent agenda. Under consent agenda tonight, there's contracts offered to Lindsey Meyer, high school specialized education teacher. Randy O'Toole, high school Spanish teacher. Laura Melvin, middle school Spanish teacher. Nicole Kavanaugh, a cook. Cheryl Kelps, a cook. Louise Walters, a seventh grade middle school teacher. Resonation, we have Sarah Durst, elementary teacher, fifth grade. Mayne Villas, high school special education teacher. Melissa Bayes, middle school teacher. And Edwin Palmer, high school social studies. We have no gifts at this time. Well, we do have a gift, Scott Construction, a couple loads of gravel from Scott Construction, and also minutes from the July nineteen thousand eighteen board meeting. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll start this vote with Kathy.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Kent.
Jim.
Yes.
Al. Welcome to your life. That passes eight zero. Under administration reports, buildings and grounds, one, three, five, and ten year report.
Yeah, can you get your report in front of you, the one, three, five, and ten year? Anyway, if you look at the red area, the high school level, start out with those. You can see we're gonna need to do some rest assessment in the next coming years. So that's something we're gonna have to keep an eye on. How we're gonna pay for that. Bob's been up there working on the roof, there have been a few spots where it's, you're starting to see that rubber starting deteriorating, so it's just a matter of time and we're gonna have to put some work into that. As far as AFE goes, we've got some, some areas there that need improvement also. You can see some of them boilers have been there quite a while, but they do have fancy boilers, that's gonna save us a lot of money. We do have them in red, you'll see over to the right. We're looking to earmark the money that we get from Highland and Russian Creek to benefit the AFE building when those sell. We've been getting pricing and stuff on the weathers and EDC, and then also the HVAC control system. So those three things you're looking at, probably a total of anywhere from four hundred fifty to five hundred thousand somewhere. So the more we can sell this school store, the better. And if you look down at LED lighting, again, that's areas where we can improve the school district and improve that building and save a lot of money down the line. So those are some areas on the path of my capital budgets project. It's another area that we wanna actually take care of. And at that, this kind of covers us all the way up through two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. If you look down through AF Middle School, we're kinda holding back, kinda spending money there. We've just been giving a little facelift for the thing, and still don't really care to decide what we're gonna do with that building. Grand Marsh, kinda the same situation, we're, you know what I mean, we're maintaining it well. That looks nice and everything, but we're not putting any money into that property right now. That's pretty much, that's pretty much it. Administration Building, again, this is another building we're not sticking a lot of money into, is maintaining it. Side restructuring, I had it listed. But yeah, it's a good enough building, we don't need to, anything. My Buildings and Grounds report, I guess we go over there next. Basically, safety, we had another trip and fall in Galbraith. We haven't had any lost time accidents till the spring, some stick work. Get them up hard a little bit. We're working on that, we're looking at everything that's happened and trying to create a safer work environment. Sometimes you say it's just ahead of that, and you should be doing all that. High School, basically, we just went over and measured up, there's gonna be a food pantry. We just, we just learned, and so what we're gonna do is we're taking a green fishbowl area. We're gonna create two rooms, we're gonna build that next week, Monday, we've got the studs coming. And we're gonna build two rooms there, so that'll, one will act as the food pantry, the other will act as a storage, temporary storage. We're not gonna do the interior of that, it's just gonna be scattered out, it'll just be a place to store paper products and that kind of stuff. Because what we've done is, we're doing six month orders now, and all the supplies go into the school rather than storing them here, and then every week hauling over, it'll help on our labor costs and everything, I think it'll be the right way to go. So it'll be a temporary storage area until something else comes up, kind of money. It can be used for anything, I don't know. So anyway, we have two rooms there, we'll be doing them quick. And then otherwise, we're doing deterral planning and all the other things. We've got a door we gotta cut in yet, or by the auto shop, we're gonna hold off till we're doing, we're doing a bunch of new stuff there eventually. So that'll be coming. The picture you see is actually AFE, we went in and took out all the lockers this summer. That used to be a middle school originally, and then the lockers needed painting and they were getting pretty rough. What we did then is we, if you look at the next page, you'll see the bottom left, you'll see the new cubbies. And what those are is we took all the cubbies out of Highland and Russian Creek and brought it in the town. So now they have all the lockers, it's quiet now, it's a lot brighter going down through there, and you don't have the banging of lockers and all that stuff.
I don't have any pictures, no pictures. All right.
Thought it was crazy.
I went through it like three times. Might, I'm very good.
Here's what I'll do, I'll, uh...
She can send it to us.
I was gonna say, I can get it linked before he leaves tonight.
Yeah, that's fine.
Otherwise, what I can do is just pass season on, too, and just kinda look at it. Other than that, that's pretty much my report on Buildings and Grounds. If you go to Russian Creek, Highland, we do have it listed with Polo Banker, but I'm always looking to help, you know what I mean, in any way I can. Vista Care is a new, new group in Rome. They're growing, they just expanded, they added another small building. I know a guy that works there, and he was a bartender, and he really wasn't going anywhere, and all of a sudden he got this job, and he's just changed completely, really impressed me. And I see the kid, and he was bartending for like ten, eleven years, he hung the models, and he just doesn't go anywhere. And now he's got this job, he's got a vehicle, he's really looking like he's coming through, and he really enjoys working. So I thought, you know, I'm gonna just pull in there and see if they'd be interested and maybe buy the school. So I knocked on a door, lady came, I got her number, I went and made a phone call. All of a sudden Jackie Harris called me, I'm excited. Turned her over to Bill Palmer anyway, and he's working with her to get her a view of the building. Glenn texted me last Wednesday, basically said, he's gonna be putting in a bid, I'm disappointed he hasn't put one in yet, but I don't wanna slow it, so you know, I don't wanna keep this thing rolling, so we're trying to put a little pressure in too, you know, come through this. He's got an asbestos removal company, just give him a price and a moving title, and he says he's gonna put in a bid, so hopefully that comes through. And then Bill's got two interested parties, and then actually, I got a friend of a friend that owns a distribution center in Wisconsin Rapids. He called me today, says, hey, I gotta see the building right now, got the guy here, he wants to, he wants to come up and see the building right now. So, called Bill, Bill made arrangements, he met him there. It's a Chinese distribution center in Wisconsin Rapids, so... So honestly, out of all of them, I really like the Vista Care one, because what they told me is they employ forty to fifty people per building. So that would be awesome for, not only for us, but for, that could bring a hundred families in their community, and maybe some more kids and stuff like that. So I'm kinda, I like San Valley and everything, but they're not, they're not, you know what I mean, employing as many people in our area. This would be something that may be better for us down the line, but any, anyone we can get, I'm happy with. So, and then other than that, I've been working on those quick claims, I didn't want you to think we, we stopped. They did release one of the forties, the one across from the park. We still gotta get and release the other three, we're working on that, so once we get that, then we really own it, you know what I mean? It says Adams Friendship School District, but guess what, all we can do is farm trees. Okay, we stop farming trees, we don't own it anymore. This way we own it, so it gives us some flexibility, so we can do what we want with property. And it's kinda like Pine Land, we didn't own Pine Land, you know what I mean, it's a little field where it burns bad. I wanna see the, before I leave here, that you guys got some properties that you can use in an emergency, or earmark them for softball fields or additions onto buildings. You know, we've got a lot of land, we could, maybe our next building project, we're gonna have to ask people. Sorry. So anyway, it's something to think about anyways. Other than that, any questions?
Just a comment, we have a nice note from Roxanne, I read, that said, her building, she was sorry not to be here tonight, but she just raved about your staff and how much work has gone into the building. She was very excited about the beginning of school, but wanted to take the time to let us all know how much work you guys have done.
Yeah, they've, they've done a lot of work this, this summer, a lot of work, with closing the school, and cleaning and building, and getting ready for that little government thing there, and the library and everything else, I mean, it's... They worked very hard this year, I got a good feeling.
Thank you.
Just a question on the, the rubber roofs, like, does that roll roof to it?
Yep.
And then...
It's got a little built up.
Rock on top of that?
Yeah, ballast.
And then that just, just basically holds the roof down. Do you get inspected periodically, or is it just like a, we know from experience that the roof's gonna go bad in X amount of years, or how does that work?
Usually the guarantee on a roof is anywhere from twenty to thirty years, depending on how much money the students are going to spend. So usually if it's a twenty year roof, you know, you're, you get twenty years, and then basically she goes downhill fast. And basically the sun just deteriorates it, you know what I mean, or it starts cracking and stuff. A lot of times the way you tell is you start getting leaks, you know, at your joints, and your expand, you know, you're getting a little expansion, contraction. Actually that wears, you know, start breaking apart on you and stuff like that, so...
Our government restraint of the prison, the brokers start to contract over to the wall, and the water gets underneath it. And then you're...
But it, it's literally, you know, we're getting to the point, right Bob, high school, she's, she's starting to get to that point. Unfortunately, that's my capital budget, so we're close to, it would cost us to replace that, you know what I mean? And it's just one of those things. And there again, maybe it's earmark some properties or whatever, or something to pay for if we need to, you know, I mean, if you get desperate, need some, need some capital, you know, be one way to do it. Other than that, hopefully they build a whole bunch more homes in Adams County when we get some of our kids.
Or adults. Maybe some dorms, and the delts, and all of this, the ball carts. How, how are them not breaking? Assuming those aren't twenty year adults.
Probably not, you know. And then, anything else?
Exclusion restraint.
Okay, I will go ahead and talk to you about exclusion restraint. It's Act one twenty-five, it's been in place since two thousand eleven. I speak to you about this every year, as it is a requirement for me to address the board about how we are doing regarding exclusion restraint. Obviously, we try to not supple or restrain students if at all possible. There are only a few instances where you can supple or restrain a student, that is if a student is gonna harm themselves or someone else. If you go ahead and, oh, that's wrong direction. But I can tell you, I remember a couple of years back, we were concerned that our numbers from exclusion and restraint went up. So in fourteen fifteen, we had eighteen. Well, then in fifteen sixteen, I honestly think we started to really document it really well, and we went all the way up to seventy-seven. So I sat with every principal, and we reviewed our exclusion restraint, and we talked about maybe some other ways that we could handle situations, or if it was appropriate, if we later reflected and we found it was inappropriate. So that takes us to last year, we were at thirty-eight, and this year we were at twenty-eight. Of those students, there were a few that were repeat. So there's twenty-eight incidences, but there were fourteen students that were involved in exclusion or restraint. And of those students, predominantly, most of them had special education services. What I am believing from this is that most of the students that didn't have to be secluded or restrained already had a behavior intervention plan in place, which means we were doing a number of prior interventions before the student ever had to be secluded or restrained. And also a great thing, as I saw, there was always a parent conference and a parent follow-up call. So we are definitely needing state guidelines to the T, and I am very pleased with the reduction. There are times where you just can't not supple or restrain students, really for their safety. I doubt we'll ever be at zero. I did review again every single one of them, and I can tell you, there was only one where I was like, oh, I wish I had more information. Did they really need to, but I mean, one out of twenty-eight where you're, you even have to question it, I think we're doing a great job. So also you'll see that I have included the flow chart of what happens when a student is secluded or restrained. We have to need timelines, so, which means notifying parents verbally, then notify parents in writing, and when you have to reconvene a team if it continues to happen. You will hear about this every August, I think, from, as you know, from a few years ago.
Are we still doing training?
Yep. So every, all new teaching staff, I talked about exclusion restraint during the new teacher training, and then the principals go ahead and reiterate it, and they're continually reminding their staff that when exclusion or restraint is appropriate. And then we're also doing non-crisis intervention training, which is really about de-escalating the students, but they also talk about if you do have to ever put your hands on a student in an appropriate way so you don't harm them. So we still do those trainings, we have three trainers in the district who are looking at potentially, through grant funding, if we get the grant, maybe training another person, it's really expensive, because we do a train the trainer model, we don't send people away for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board?
I have a question.
All right.
I have a comment. And this is, I think about Brenda, about this, but on your sitting report? When you, the procedure, you need a space between the behavior and dirt.
Is that it, or what?
Sorry, I just had this...
That's all right, Brenda said that, I was gonna tell you while that she's gonna kick your butt if you don't... Do you sign that to parents, that report?
Yeah, so I'm trying to find this, it's on a couple different documents, they're on Google Docs, and we have Word. And when you convert it to a Google Doc, sometimes, so I'm trying to find it, so if you can circle that and give it to me later, I can fix it, but I don't see it right now, so you'll have to tell them, okay?
Anyone else? Moving on, your reports, Policy Committee, Kevin.
Policy Committee met at five thirty tonight. The first thing on our agenda was an update, Mr. Vail, on our new policy and how to go through policy and curriculum. So would you like to give us a revision, or a sample?
Sure, one, one big change is taking advantage of technical changes. And I work with Mr. LaValle, who is the representative from Neola. If it's just a technical change, I have that as the district minister, I have the rights to just change that, and it never has to come to the board. So the decision is, does this alter the policy, or is it something new? If so, then that's above a technical change. That is brought to the Policy Committee for first and second readings. So, what we had for first readings, there's about a dozen of them there. In reality, the batch that was offered to us from Neola, there were around twenty. But I can take some of those out just because they were technical changes. So that reduces the amount of man-hours that we spend as a board on, on those policies. Those are big changes. The second one is just, we had evolved over my first year of packets of information that would have first policy, first reading, the existing policy, the second reading, the final policy. And there's just too many links in that chain, so it's difficult to keep that coherent. So through working through Neola, through working with Mrs. McManus, we have a system where it's one click, and we see what we're doing. Those are two big changes.
And Jim, I want to see, we were on it for the last three years, so we will be reviewing some things that we need to clean up in the, in the future that came out of that, either things were sent up to Neola or were not dealt with properly. So that's nice to get that all cleaned up and sharp. So the first things, I would like to make a motion to approve the following policies on their second reading. And that would be Policy eight one four six, notification of educational options. Policy eight three five zero on confidentiality, and Policy eight four five two, automatic external defibrillators. Is there a second?
Sure.
Motion made by Kathy, seconded by Karen, to move to approve policies. Eight one four six, notification of educational options. Eight three five zero, confidentiality. Eight four five two, automatic external defibrillators, defibrillating course. Discussion. Hearing none, start this vote with Joanne.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Kent.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
And my vote just to pass a eight zero.
Then we looked at other policy updates for first reading, and I'm just going to take three out right away that are going to stay at first reading, and that would be Policy three two one seven, copy of weapons. Policy four two one seven, copy of weapons. And Policy five one one three point one, part-time open enrollment. So they are staying at first reading until we get further information. So the following policies went through first reading. Policy zero one four two point seven, orientation. Policy zero one five two, copy of officers. Policy one four six zero, copy of physical examination. Policy sixteen nineteen, group health plans. Policy three one six zero, copy of physical examination. Policy three four one nine, copy of group health plans. Policy four one six zero, copy of physical exam. And Policy five three three zero, copy of administration of medication slash emergency care. And our last policy tonight was Policy eight six oh five, copy of use of electronic wireless communication devices by district employees who operate, board, or owned or operated vehicles.
Is that it? Nice. Finance, Finance Committee. Joanne.
Okay. On behalf of the Finance Committee, I am going to approve general fund checks number seven eight seven eight two through seven eight eight nine zero, and ACH checks number nine zero 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 one through nine zero 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 one eight, and two two six three through two two eight five, totaling nine hundred seventy-three thousand, six hundred twenty dollars and four cents. And activity fund checks number three zero three nine five through three zero four zero one, totaling three thousand, five hundred sixty-six dollars and fifty-three cents for the month of July.
I will second that.
Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Jim, to move to approve general fund checks number seven eight seven eight two through seven eight eight nine zero, and ACHs number nine zero 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 one through nine zero 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 one eight, and two two six three through two two eight five, totaling nine hundred seventy-three thousand, six hundred twenty dollars and four cents. And activity funds checks three zero three nine five through three zero four zero one, totaling thirty-five hundred sixty-six dollars and fifty-three cents for the mo, for the month of July. Discussion. I have a question. If we approve these in committee, could we just approve them in the consent agenda instead of going through this every moment? Instead of reading all that? We certainly could. Let's, does the board make action on that, you think, or will be good just?
No, I'll just present it as the agenda.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody? Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start this vote with Ron.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Kent. Jim.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
And my boy Justin passed a zero, seven to zero, one extension.
Okay, and then the bank credit commitment. On behalf of the Finance Committee, I move to approve Royal Bank for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year for the bank credit commitment with Adams Friendship Area School District. I'll start it now.
Thank you, Jeff. Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Jeff, to move to approve Royal Bank for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year for the bank credit commitment with the Adams Friendship Area School District. Discussion. Hearing none. We'll start this vote with Ron.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Kent.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
My boy just passed a eight zero. Anything else? Joanne. New business, co-curricular changes to two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, personal staff handle.
So as we get closer to the start of the school year, we're filling some positions. So you can see on the number one, there's an A and a B. Letter A, I am proposing that we adjust those curricular positions. There's two changes. One is the inclusion of a district school improvement team member, the DISIT team. And there's a couple of reasons behind including that at that level. We currently have, currently have? We have had in the past this DISIT team, and their practice was to take out, three or four times a year, they would meet during a school day, and they would meet in this building, and they would tackle curricular issues for the district. I am proposing that we move that outside of the school day. I want as many chances as we can to get our educators in the classroom with our students. So in order to do that, to move those meetings outside of the contracted day, we offer a co-curricular contract. And also with the dollar amount that's attached to this DISIT team position, we are going to use this as one of our major engines to help drive where we go with instruction. And it goes back to, who are the experts that should be telling us and giving us ideas as far as where we should go with our curriculum, with our instruction? Well, we have them, our teachings have them, and this utilizes that. So that's one change at the top. So that's one change at the top. Further down, the high school musical had two positions, a lead and a second. We're changing that to three positions. The percentage does not change. It's just the money is allocated differently into three positions. So that allows you to have a lead director, an assistant director, and then also for the musical part, the person who was working with music. So those are the changes in the co-curricular offerings. And so I propose that we consider those. And then letter V would be the different people who are slotted for the positions that we filled since last time.
Well, does it also discuss the mission and vision of how our technology will evolve to? Because we talked about we needed that kind of collaboration with our curriculum and our technology.
Yes. What we have to be very careful with is the DISIT team is not a yes or no. It's not as if somebody comes to the DISIT team and says, "I want to incorporate this piece of technology into my classroom." And they have to say yes or no, not at all. What they're doing is helping us develop where we're going. And then when these ideas come, they help funnel them in the right direction.
More vision.
Yes. And really relying on their expertise as current educators and professors. And the percentage of the co-curricular base, I think you can recognize the importance that I'm placing on this group.
Are they only educators, DIsits?
Yes.
Okay, they're not any, they're all educators?
Yes.
Okay. And how are they chosen?
Well, the building administrator gets to decide. So we start with the job description. And they look and we propose them.
And how many are on this list?
A total of seven.
And is there anyone that needs?
Yes, Mrs. Tremont will be with you. And her position as the curricular assistant.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the changes to the athletic and activities offering as presented by administration.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jim, second by Joanna, to move to approve changes to athletics and activities offering as presented by administration. Here you go, we'll start this vote with Lana.
Yes.
Kent.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Joanna.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
My boy Jesse passed a big zero. Co-curricular hires, um, is there a motion?
I move to approve the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen co-curricular contracts as presented by administration.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Joanna, second by Jim, to move to approve the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen co-curricular contracts as presented by administration. Discussion.
Are all the co-curricular positions built now? A lot left?
No.
Okay.
A lot of it has to come together once we start working.
Okay. If there was some discussion, you might drop them if they're not built. Is that it? Is there any discussion on that?
Not much.
Okay. Would you build from outside? You could build internally?
I don't know. It would depend on the specific position.
Is there any more discussion? Here you go, we'll start with Kent.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Joanna.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Lana.
Yes.
My boy Jesse passed a big zero.
Virtual program agreement. We were here last year with the same proposal. And in short, if there's a student in our district and they want to attend at Wisconsin specifically, if they want to attend at Wisconsin Rapids in their virtual school program, it requires the sixty-six point oh three agreement as presented. So the question that I've asked last year and ask again this year, why don't you just open and roll into their virtual program? We have many people that open and roll into virtual programs statewide. The reason why you have to use a sixty-six oh three is because the Wisconsin Rapids School District has chosen not to accredit their virtual program. I don't know why. Somehow, I guess it's to their advantage. And I don't understand that very well. But that's the reason why they just can't open and roll. It has to be this agreement. The money doesn't make a difference to us as far as we're not getting the short end of the deal at all, as if they were just opening and rolling into Wisconsin Rapids.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve virtual program agreements at six point zero three point one as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Joanna, second by Jim, move to approve virtual program agreement sixty-six point zero three point one as presented. Here you go, we'll start this vote with Jim.
Yes.
Jeff. Yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Joanna.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Lana.
Yes.
Kent.
Yes.
And my boy Jesse passed a big zero. Item number three concerns the land sale. So consider each adjournment to close section nineteen point eight five one. Eight, eight, nineteen point eight five one. Is there a motion? Again, consider adjournment to close section nineteen point eight five one. And one more time, consider adjournment to a close section nineteen point eight five one. Is there any motions? Okay, now we're going to go to the, we're going to number five. Land sale for wholesale roughly a third of a city lot put community number. I'll be answering this.
This goes back to when the school district exchanged land with the city, where the school district had the elementary, the old elementary. In the exchange of land, there's this home currently owned by the Odell family. And they have an underground pool behind their home. And one-third of their pool is on now school land. So they have put forth the funds to survey. They have done all of the labor. And they're saying, may we please purchase that so we own the third of our pool?
I would say an S M S tree. Smoking lesson.
So if this is considered like a order, the next step would be to have Harrealti, who said for the district, he'll just take care of this. He'll make the arrangements with the Odells, complete the purchasing. And then they have a completed property.
And we, I asked Jim to make sure that we knew what the proper price for that part of that lot was. And he did that. And I think this is directly the duty of us.
And something else, and we've said this earlier, but it will come up when we're talking more significant selling of property. The school district is, the board has to accept a reasonable business offer when they're selling property. And this certainly is reasonable based on Bill Barret's, what he offered as an artifact. So if we consider forward to the potential sale of this school building that we have, it has to be reasonable. There used to be the day, as we've all can remember probably different things, where you could sell it to somebody for a buck just to get rid of it. But in order to do that as a school, you'd have to vote with the entire electorate. Everybody could come vote that night. Sometimes those go bad. The law has changed to where it's now just a board decision, but it must be a reasonable business offer. And certainly, this is a reasonable business offer.
So is there a motion?
I move to approve the full sale of one-third of a lot in a whole crest subdivision to Brian and Jamie Odell for one thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jim, second by Jeff, to move to approve the full sale of one-third of a lot in the whole crest subdivision to Brian and Jamie Odell for one thousand dollars. Here you go, we'll start with Jeff.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Lana?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brenda? Oh, I'm sorry. And Rick, eight, zero. Moving on. Request to a local district administrator authority to offer contract previous to board approval between August two thousand eighteen and September two thousand eighteen. Go ahead.
This is something that we enacted last year at the same time. And due to the landscape of recruiting, retaining, and offering contracts on the spot, it came to our advantage last year. Please don't be alarmed next year if I ask for this from July through September. Because there are times where even then, if we could offer the contract that day, we could.
I move to give the district administrator the authority to offer contracts to professional staff between August thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, and September tenth, two thousand eighteen, previous to approval by the full school board.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Lana. Motion made by Kathy, second by Lana, move to give the district administrator authority to offer contracts to professional staff between August thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, and September tenth, two thousand eighteen, previous to approval by the full school board. Discussion.
Do we still need to approve that thing, Jerry? Or is it just, in other words, we approve it at the cover of this meeting? Or?
You just, done.
Got it. That's what I assumed.
Is there any other discussion?
Is there any idea that perhaps this could be policy? Seeing as this is how we're evolving every year, we get that, those summer?
I think it could be considered.
Because that way, it would give you the ability, like you said, sometimes making that offer at that point. And then sharing the resume afterwards, which is usually what we'd like to see anyway.
The only thing I would caution against once it's a policy, it's very difficult, not very difficult. It would be a longer path to then remedy that policy. Whereas this, as long as the district administrator isn't lying with the board's wishes, this is nice, this is good. So let's say a couple of years down the line, you're not aligned with what I'm doing, and you don't want the district administrator to have it. It would be easier to just not allow it as opposed to going back and changing policy first, second. So that would be the hesitation to make that policy.
Okay.
Is there any more discussion? Here you go, we'll start with Kathy.
Yes.
Joanna.
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Lana.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
My boy Jesse passed a big zero. Reports for notification. A confirmation, Lana's one for the meeting, she's going to report for us.
They had their annual meeting this summer last, in July, and elected officers. And then they shared about the events that were going to be planned already at the Maynard Center. So they already have four events on the schedule. A flyer will be coming out to promote those.
Yeah, I see the flyer. You can actually buy season tickets for the shows this year. So. How's it, $1,000?
Yep, maybe a 10% discount or something. You know, it's a digital for new season passes. Great opportunities for our kids. And then they also talked about the scholarships for teachers.
Thank you. With that, we'll go with Barbie first.
So you might remember a few months back, you requested that I surveyed those who had opened and rolled out. So any of those people that had opened and rolled out this school year, we went ahead and sent a letter to with a self-addressed stamp on the envelope, asked a couple of questions, and asked for them to send back information. So there was a total of thirty-one kids who applied to open and roll out. And that comes down to twenty-three families. And of those twenty-three families, I received five letters back. Now, just because you also asked to be open and rolled out doesn't mean you actually do it. A lot of people go ahead and say they're open and rolling out, and they don't go and follow through with it. And then the kids show back up. So the five that did send information back to me, us, one, two, three, four of the five talked that they lived close to Oxford, they lived close to Goma, they lived close to Oxford, and their husband and them lived and worked in the, worked in the dumps. We did receive one person who let it be known that she is unwilling her child out because of the closing brochure. So those were, of the twenty-three sent, those were the responses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan? I'll start with Randy. Yes, I see it looking down there.
We finished summer school last week on Friday, or yeah, Friday. Our average for the second session, we had about one hundred and sixty-five kids. I didn't calculate that. Friday's numbers were quite down because I believe the fair being the night before. And most of the kids I saw there did not show up to summer school the next morning. Some came a little late. But we did have about two hundred and twenty averaged during the first session and about one hundred and seventy, like I said, for second session. So I know we're going to be talking about how we structure summer school this year and see if there's anything to improve to get those numbers up.
We had middle school sports meeting tonight at five o'clock. There was a lot of people there, and it was hotter than all get out. So glad it went nice and quick.
Couple of uninvited kids?
We had a couple of invited kids. There was, our girls' dance team from the high school does not apparently like the bat that we have downstairs. And so, and then the other thing I wanted to say is I want to kind of echo what Kathy reported from Roxanne about the buildings and grounds crew. Our middle school looks awesome, and those, they work so hard to try to get that done in such a short amount of time, and as much work had to be done on our building for the visit from our cabinet members. So I thought that was awesome, they did a great job. Ready to go? Just about.
Before I go, Crystal, I want to thank her from the district and all of us here, all the great work she did getting a commission here, her wonderful words at the, at the hearing. I think we're all indebted to your hard work you've done for the district. We certainly do appreciate that.
Now that the set visit's over, we're back to our regular work. But one of the things that we're looking at right now is DOJ, with the school safety grant, is releasing the second round. So we're just waiting to hear how much they're going to allocate. It's a per-student allocation this time. And then they give you a two-week turnaround to submit the grant. So we are looking at that grant right now.
Karen?
We're well into our summer professional, floating professional development days with the teachers. A lot of the groups have been meeting, and it's been going very well. I told Jim that it was a great idea to do this. That a lot of the teachers are really enjoying it and appreciating the time that they get before school starts. So it's going really well. And we have, what did I just say? Four tomorrow. So four groups busy tomorrow.
Yep. Okay, first graders don't want.
Our online registration is well underway. But on Wednesday, we will be at the high school inviting parents of anyone that wants to come in with help with any registration. But also live touch pictures will be there. So we'll be doing our registration on Wednesday up at the high school. Starts at eleven o'clock.
Is that the only time, that's when you do the board get their badges made?
Yes.
So is there that point for a negative?
It goes till eight. It will be eleven, no, seven, seven, eleven to seven.
Not one.
Yeah, because it's eight hours. Yeah, because it's eight hours, 11 to seven.
We also have another date, the 30th, Jim, is it, the 29th or 30th?
For, for pictures, but the registration is only Wednesday.
Oh, but he was talking about getting badges, so he could.
Is August 30 also?
August 30.
I had to sort it out for the board.
Yeah, Jim.
Your staff IDs that, that we all get, uh, from 11 to 7 this Wednesday, show up at the high school, if that's, if your schedule, if that doesn't, uh, Thursday morning, August the 30th, or maybe until noon, Live Touch will also be there to take the rest of the staff picture, so, so please be seated.
That was it, that was the big thing, everybody else was covering, I just wanted to know. Online registration Wednesday.
Mr. Moore?
Uh, I'll reiterate, Doug and Kevin and their crew at the high school do a great job. The school's coming on great, and he's got the ability to, um, add that room for the food pantry, which Vicki has worked hard on, um, getting that money so that more of our students, uh, that may be in need of food can have that available to them at least once a week, and our students will then have it available to them more often than that. So that's through Second Harvest, and Vicki will talk more about that, but, um, we had so, uh, several students attend summer school, uh, in the month of July, uh, because it worked with our teachers, so that finished up, and, uh, the building's much more buzzing lately because we have football, today soccer and volleyball started, so a lot more cars in the parking lot, kids running around, it's, uh, schools ready to start.
Vicki?
Um, if you want to know anything about the food pantry, the goal is to have it open by beginning of October. It's going to be like the Grand Marsh Food Bank, so that our families and our kids can utilize it. Um, I was approached about this, so I jumped on board, brought it to Mr. Baywell, and he said, "Sure, go for it." So, um, I met, um, Kevin and I met with Andrea from Second Harvest, and we're, we're moving along, and Kevin was good enough to create a room so that we can have an in and out. The Grand Marsh does awesome with their one doorway, we should have two, it'll be, I'm very excited about it. And any kind of donations, I'm hoping to do, get a couple dozen backpacks, got the seats in this over, so that kids can just put their food in a backpack to go home if they come on Friday and they have no food at home. So it'll be open to the, our students any day, but for our families, it'll be on Monday night is the goal right now, so if there's anything to do. Um, and then we did get the fruit and vegetables in Grand Marsh, um, AFE will have fruit and vegetables, um, starting the first full week in September, so that will be the 10th, and then, um, equipment grant, we're getting our compressors put in, AFE had a new compressor, and the high school getting a new compressor from the equipment grant. That's it.
Jim?
Uh, a couple of things to mention. Registration is open Wednesday, 11 to 7, for people in person. We have started online registration for returning families. As of about 4:00 today, we had 1,100 of our students registered online. So that means what we did last year, we had every student come through. That's not the case this Wednesday. A lot will come through to get their pictures taken, but they won't have to stop at every table, so it should really help our families out to come, so we're glad for that. Secondly, uh, we've been recognizing, and rightfully so, the work that our custodial and maintenance crew have been doing with our buildings, and it is outstanding, but I get a great view from up above, and I see all the different layers, and at every layer, I am seeing from our, from our employees' commitment that just shines through. And we look at what Vicki does with the food program during the summer. What an excellent approach that we have. Uh, we have everything that goes on in our business office with the Ronnie's crew, with Jenny, and HR, um, all of the hiring, the resignations, and getting all that stuff set up. When you look at what Crystal is able to accomplish with the federal visit, but what Shannon is doing with these two floating workdays, that was no small task, getting that together. When you look at our building administrators, um, putting in the time and the effort and their expertise, and then, then the teaching staff and the parents are just floating around and doing these things. It really is, uh, it's rewarding to see from an administrator's point of view, and as a board, you're going to see the results of it. So I, I'd like to say this summer was a fantastic summer. Last thing, and we still have some summer left, but, as I stated with the retired educators, uh, my mother and I like to have conversations on Sunday afternoons, and she said, "Well, Jimmy, make the paper." And in Sunday's Wisconsin State Journal, on the second page of the opinion section, it may still have it in Quiktria, uh, there's a guest column, uh, from Secretary Hazer, and in it, it's exceptionally flattering to our district and our kids and what we're doing for our kids. This was in the State Journal, but this is also an article that he released federally, so this was released. Adams Friendship Middle School was highlighted at the national level. Uh, and, and Rick, excellent choice to, you know, recognize Crystal for reference, and she'll be the first one to say it wasn't just me. But just that whole district-wide commitment, we have a lot to be proud of, and we have a tremendous springboard to get into the 18, 19 school year. It's going to be fun.
Can you send it and send it to us?
I can try. It's so long.
I can.
Really? I hope it'll have any pictures with it.
I think what happened is I had it uploaded so quickly, it out to the pictures, I'm in yet.
With that, is there any other comments?
Annual school board meeting.
That's. To Monday, from today. Definitely Monday from today. Uh, we'll have, we'll have the budget meeting at 7:30, right, Ryan? And then we'll have the, um, annual meeting will start at 8:00. You know, Jimmy, something, um, watch your, watch your computer because of, we need a meeting before the budget meeting, we usually have one at 7:00, if we need to hire, we won't need to hire somebody if something else comes up, so that's how that will work. With that, any other comments?
Vote.
Anybody trying not to adjourn?
Vote.
What?
Don't forget to vote.
Oh. Yes, uh, tomorrow's electric, uh, election day, so please vote. With that, we're adjourned, um, 7:57.